This one don't hear the pledge.
Oh, it does, it does. I'm staring at my stuff. The pledge, and then I'm gonna read the state. Good. Yep. Oh. But... It's no show to all these. But that's for the... Mr. Davis is on the way. Get a vehicle. And he's...
Call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caleronia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Genacio.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North D'Anto.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage. Sparta.
Here.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I'd like to ask the Lima supervisor, Mike Park, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have a statement I'd like to read. Today's Board of Supervisors meeting will be livestreamed on the county's YouTube channel, official Livingston County, New York. All live streams will be accessible directly through the YouTube channel and on the county's website under the Agenda, Minutes, and Broadcast button. Livestreaming technology allows the online audience to see and hear those in the boardroom via video and audio. To provide the best audio experience possible, please be sure to position yourself close to the microphone when you are speaking. We have some minutes from our last regular board meeting, the 12th of August. Does anyone have any corrections, changes that they'd like to bring forward? Hearing none, a motion in a second, please.
No.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing, uh, we have one communication, please, Michelle.
The annual luncheon hosted by Cornell Cooperative Extension of Livingston County will be on Wednesday, September 23rd, at 11:00 a.m. at the National Warplane Museum, 3489 Victrilane, Genacio. Invitations were sent to your homes. Please RSVP by September 9th, or let Michelle know too.
We also have abstracted claims next on the agenda.
Mr. Pangrazio, approving abstracted claims 8B, August 26, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstracted claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on the abstracted claims. Hearing none, a roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caleronia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Genacio. Groveland.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Lima.
Hi.
Livonia.
Hi.
Mount Morris.
Hi.
North D'Anto.
Hi.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Hi.
Portage. Sparta.
Hi.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 1901, absent 108, adopted.
Next on the agenda, we have the words of the floor. Mr. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for District Attorney Greg McCaffrey for his department update. Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. First off, I'd like Michelle, she graciously indicated I have one hour to speak. If I don't have time to speak an hour, I will have to run the other forty-five minutes. In case you didn't know, in case you're in the bubble, obviously, COVID-19 and this pandemic has had a bottom crackdown. I mean, kind of just returns office, it's like probably every time in the department. For those of you that don't know or chose to forget, in mid-March of this pandemic, basically reached pinnacle, or as we began, better to put it. The courts closed, pretty much lighting up my office, which should have been a vacation, created, again, a nightmare scenario because we had to go and prosecute cases, order cases up, and deal with what we knew was going to be a landslide when the courts reopened. The benefit that we had for our department was that the criminal procedure law, which is basically the law on the laws when you work, were told or stopped. And again, most of the important protocols and laws and criminal procedure law are still being pulled until the early September. So, good news is that the law kind of did us a favor, but again, crime in Southland County, law enforcement kept giving us a very good job and very proud to be out there. Pretty soon, when these jurisdictions uplifted, I think my department would get in good shape. Also, as you know, there are various executive orders, administrative orders, governor, chief of district judge, state court, more Judge Dore, you know, stuff to do with this. So, for me, as a department, then, my last six months, basically, then, Martha threw these orders, and these orders turned into, well, could and could not do. In terms of other things within the DA's office, obviously, 2020 was kind of a new beginning for us. I was reporting many times last year, 2019, talking about criminal justice reform, which, again, was a failed reform, discovered reform. You know, we discussed this, we heated to a death course, complained about it, I won't, you know, have a debate, say pride about it, but again, it was difficult times, but I think the justice was pretty well. 2020, again, we had ten weeks of kind of this discovery and injustice reform. And then, again, COVID-19 hit, and everything was kind of, kind of put on hold. So far, we've done very well with it, even though it's only ten weeks, basically, getting where it's February, early March. And now, again, we're kind of picking up. Probably the biggest or most essential thing I want the board to be aware of, community, we've successfully transitioned from having a paper-based office to a visual office. We had a complete cloud-based or an automated air system. So, I see a lot of the sheriff's office here, I know from the UCH, it's been a resounding success, we're able to implement that. It's credit to our law enforcement agencies, it's credit to county government, it gives the resources to do it. It's truly amazing that we went from thousands and thousands and thousands of pieces of paper to basically drag and drop, click and set method of sending information. So, again, I think all law enforcement cooperation is amazing, definitely. Again, I also thank the county for giving us the financial resources to implement this computer system. We've also engaged with eDiscovery. Again, I talked to you guys before about what Discovery is, it's changed the information law enforcement net. We basically do everything now, like, for example, all photographs, video, audio, paperwork, everything that's in the computer system is just set into the user's calendar. So, I don't know if it's important to all that are on today or here, but basically, my file can be sent to them with an app and a second. So, again, that's been a big transition for our office, but we've been able to successfully do it with six full-time attorneys, one part-time attorney, part-time investigator, then four full-time support secretaries. The other change we have seen within the DA's office, we started deploying support staff with secretary to the county's north courts, running the supervisory, that chosen north court. It's a whole new world out there. Big shocker, no one showing up. You got to stagger cases every 10, 15, 20 minutes of COVID protocol. So, we basically made an effort to send the secretary as well, to assist our attorneys that will pay for and update the public system. As you can imagine, I never want to pick on the people who squat, we could, back in trying to talk and work in court, and, you know, several of the former police officers, and update the computer at the same time. Not really easy to do. So, we do, my attorneys talk in court and the secretary do like the computer system to keep that updated, sharing, sharing information. The last few months, businesses started picking up a little bit. Again, courts are starting slowly reopen. Justice courts are back in money, again, kind of a nightmare scenario for us. Court needs to take two, three hours, now takes four, five hours, because the cases are being, kind of spaced out 10, 15, 20 minutes apart. The difficulty for having, again, a case might be scheduled for 12 o'clock, depending on the show, to the next case, it's like 12:15, 12:30. So, unfortunately, my attorneys are spending a lot more time in court than fully activated. Traffic, which I know, I have not to make that for the county, but I also understand the C player, also the V guy, so much bad. Traffic, revenue is probably also down, because, again, a lot of traffic, people don't want to come to court right now. Some people are paying by mail, some are choosing to do diversion, and, you know, we have the worst type secret, and we just fail to answer the traffic. But not a whole lot can be done, and there are possible suspended warrants, which is really unfortunate at this time. I saw, you know, Mr. Man just walk in recently. For those that don't know, Grand Jury, he was deeply connected to the DA's office, right in the basement of the courthouse. It is not a good venue for social distancing, to put 22 people in there, a temporary witness, a senior, meeting court security, a visiting inmate. Basically, can't start the eye on, we don't see a power of having Grand Jury attend that office and go to that scene. So, county creations just gave us building two, the other four in that one, you know. And it's kind of revelation, the board office down there, it's bright, it's spacious, built a filter for my attorneys, very private, very secure. Sheriff's Department of Court Security down there, that's a gal, doesn't sign a lot. And it's been, again, a revelation for us, that if I have my lane, and county creates one, I will perfectly repeat Grand Jury down there. Really worth that loss, so definitely, I thank you, county, for that. County Court, Judge Noto, Judge Allen, they're pretty much up and running for a paid person, as well as Skype. Half our places are done being Skype in our office, the other half are off at county court, which, again, has also created a little bit of a nightmare because of social distancing, a lot of through teleconference, and again, a lot of downtime. What used to be county court gatherings from 9:00 to 11:00 on Tuesday, Thursday, are now county court gatherings from 9:00 a.m. to like 3:00 p.m. Because the cases are 15, 16 minutes apart. But again, that's something we're dealing with. Trials, we don't have to state any trials at the county court, but Justice Courts, jury trials, remember, they keep tentatively coming up the plan. So, the difficulty we have is, like a complete same with the prosecution, is cases don't get better at the time. We're kind of anxious to wait and get back in front of the jury. Again, I don't know how we're doing that in court with an A, or a court, but, again, in jury box, it's 12, it's too often. We're probably have to put them in gallery or trial. Anyone that's been in court with an A, those offenses are somewhat unforgiving in the few hours, so if the jury gets to sit, they'll see. I'm not sure if we can talk about it. Hearings, county court hearings, we are doing those now, again, both virtually and both live. And I think that the most important thing, and I'm most proud of, with my office, since Grand Jury was allowed to re-convince, again, the local government, all that, Grand Jury is screening, many of us were telling him, get them to county court. We were allowed to re-convince Grand Jury at July 17th. The store will run Grand Jury every other Wednesday, sometimes every Wednesday. We had such a backlog of how many cases coming from COVID epidemic, and I've been able to go through the courses, that in the first five weeks or eight, Grand Jury, we can be, we presented 44 cases, here's 39 in light of that. And this is all in nine sessions. So, again, a pretty active effort on the part of my office, and this Grand Jury's just poison league, so. The good news for us, we're caught up, we're ready to go, and we'll actually one day leave. And again, if it can't, because of law, it's a big, if you continue to make the progress, in day employment, and also the fact that business, which are coming in, sometimes, and, again, do it in line with the law. That's the update, pre-COVID, post-COVID, and you can see if you get some of the years. Any questions? I don't need honey, but... Pretty good, Michelle, right?
Thank you, Ray. Next, we have a resolution, committee of the whole. I'd like County Administrator Coyle to join me up at the podium, please.
I'd also like to invite up Sheriff Landory, Sheriff Matt Dean, Chief Deputy Dan House, representing the Police Service Bureau, also Chief Deputy Jeff Allen, representing the Department of Social Services Bureau, Chief Deputy Jason Hassel, representing members of the sheriff's office, questions continue, and Director Anne Schultz, representing members of the县基区局, they're all about, and with Professor D. Segal of Livingston County.
So, Michelle, we do have, we have a resolution here, a legal release.
Resolution recognizing the heroism, bravery, professionalism of the Livingston County Sheriff's Office during the incident on May 27, 2020.
I will give you a motion in a second.
No.
There is. We have a motion in a second. I'll ask if there's any further discussion or comments from the board supervisors at this time. Hearing none, a roll, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Hi.
Caleronia.
Hi.
Canisius.
Hi.
Genacio.
Hi.
Groveland.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi.
Lima.
Hi.
Livonia.
Hi.
Mount Morris.
Hi.
North D'Anto.
Hi.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Hi.
Portage.
Hi.
Sparta.
Hi.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 1930, absent 79, adopted.
Um, certainly, Sheriff and the whole team, uh, we have a word to come for the people who are from all of the residents of Livingston County. And, you know, it's probably, appreciate all the professionalism and bravery and quality that you protect, whether you have to, essentially, um,
We now have some resolutions which require a separate vote.
Mr. Pangrazio, amending 2020 Livingston County Budget, Department of Health and Department of Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, Department of Health and Department of Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Establishing an account, CARES Act.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing transfer, increasing capital project account, courthouse upgrades from capital project account, government center upgrades.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Is there any questions or discussion on this transfer? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing transfer, increasing capital project account, ambulance equipment from capital project account, Millennium Drive complex.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon. Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for accounting services for the Livingston County, for Livingston County, Drusher and Malaki LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Are there any questions on this professional service contract? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, Mount Cyanide Genomics Inc., doing business as Semaphore.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Highway Department, Midland Asphalt Materials Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, Catholic Charities of Livingston County.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. This time I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Awarding bid for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office for the Livingston County Emergency Communications System Upgrade Project Phase Five, Equipment Procurement Contract Two, Steel Lattice Antenna Towers, Midstate Construction and Electronic Team.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted. Amending the 2020 Livingston County Salary Schedule, Central Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any discussion or questions on this resolution? Hearing none, roll please yourself.
Avon.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris. North Anzo.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater. West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes nineteen thirty, absence seventy-nine, adopted.
This time I'd like to ask Megan Crowe to come forward to the podium and introduce the presentation on the Livingston County Water Supply Study.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon. We're giving an update this afternoon on the water supply study update. The grant source for this project is a local government's efficiency grant, which provides technical assistance and competitive grants to local governments for projects that will achieve cost-saving for municipal efficiencies through shared services, cooperative agreements, or consolidations. The county received $270,000 from the Department of State to implement this project, with $170,000 being spent on this planning study, with the remaining funds used to purchase equipment and other staff. CPL began this project in late January of 2019, so the municipal kickoff, you may remember the goal of the project was to update the previous water study completed in 1991. In 91, or since 91, many of the recommendations of the study have been implemented, such as the creation of the Livingston County Water and Sewer Authority. The project was an opportunity to develop a collective vision between all municipalities within Livingston County within the world. We plan to hold a municipal leadership meeting to invite all town supervisors and village mayors on September 17th. That way, you'll have a chance to review the draft document with your staff and come together again to discuss this project in an open forum. There are several recommendations included in the study, and I certainly won't go off out of brick in the presentation, except to say that the purpose here is to implement upgrades to water systems and define ways to collaborate together, whether that be through equipment and materials or other community upgrades that could benefit in terms of growth and development within our county. It's been a complex project, but certainly everyone wants clean water in an affordable way, and you'll see in a moment there are many ways to achieve this for Livingston County. The staff at CPL kept objectivity and a data-driven approach to problem-solving and the forefront as they devised the Water City Update at the direction of our steering committee and by taking input from each municipality. Our steering committee consisted of Supervisor Demme, Mayor Proctor, the county administrator, Angela Ellis, Bill Bacon, Mark Rowe, Michelle Baines, and Patrick Brink. Today, I'm here to introduce Rick Henry, the principal of CPL, to give a brief description of our project methods and really guide us to the findings and implementations that we've explored together.
Not really. This is the first time I've had a face-to-face meeting with a project manager. Happy to help, happy to help. I'm wearing something other than jeans. As Megan said, we started this project fairly long time ago, and frankly, it was a little bit of a blessing to have both COVID and, you know, it's not probably what we'd say, but it gave us time to step back and reflect on where we were headed and how we're going to get there. Anyone, I was involved in the '91 study, and I've been involved in Livingston County water issues for three years, and it really is a regional water system. Even though there's several sources of water, they all generally interact, some of them interact less than others, but on the more deadly county, you have Lima, you have Barroso, you have Lubonya, Canisius, Springwater, and Scott Springs. We have lots of interacting waters, so it's not going to be terribly heavy, but interconnected. And I think the big thing that to take away is that there's lots of sources and lots of pipes that keep it around, and we need to figure out how to find that. We're working towards that, because some of the villages have had a little bit of a challenge before, but we're now getting some collaboration on how we interact with them and how we're ready to interact with them. These are the water sources in the county, and we started from the smallest and building the biggest. The biggest being Arm County Water. They have 200 million gallon tanks, 150 and 50 gallon day treatment plants. They can supply all the water to the county, typically wanting to, but those significant dollars associated with getting the water to the county. So that's all I have about this water study. We haven't come up with what these projects are. We did this in Livingston County about 20 years ago, and then we have them the last five years. I tried doing their buy, how we're going to get water to the county, and Livingston County's spending 35 million dollars in Monroevan to get 2 million gallons of significant lift in terms of dollars. But they're ultimately going to replace the city's utility water treatment plant. We may not get there, we may never want to get there in terms of Charleston, Bradmore, or Gansville, but we wanted to present all the information to you guys, to the community, so that you guys can get into this, let them know what the source for here with the community, the community, the municipality, the county. The big issue that I see in terms of the growth of the county in terms of economic development, that's really the focus of this study, not the clean water aspect, is you don't have a lot of access to the gas. So every time that the lady comes to the board and says, I have this new project, but we can't supply the water, or there's other infrastructure issues, the water and the pipeline. It becomes a frustrating process, which is let the seed of this is committed to me, that has jobs, that can bolster this community. And if you look on the right side of this, there's three or four, five, no capacity. There's literally no capacity left in these waters. There's very little incentive for a village to increase the capacity at a net cost for the county. And that's where your investment, the state investment in infrastructure can build up some capacity. And these are the parks that Phil's been working on for several years. There may be others, maybe other economic development opportunities. These are the ones that we are aware of. We call them that, not residential development, but economic development. And we really are having a struggle with developing these park systems, very little access to the water. And in order to provide that access, we need to have some capacity. In terms of means compelling beyond the water quantum issue, we have water quality, we have interconnections. Interconnections are really something that Mark Rowe from the health department sides with us. We don't, we're not looking to shut off any living system, any other community system, we're looking to connect them so that they all can provide emergency supply, whether that be redundant or supplemental. Redundant means dangerous places, so if they have the dollars, we're going to provide redundant supply, and we can run a pretty big pipe somewhere to be able to provide a million and a million families. If they're supplemental, then we only have to run the surface side pipe that can only provide maybe half or four. So I interchange those words, if that's redundant supply versus supplemental is important. And then we have operation maintenance, and I'm getting that, it's just a very small detail. So we have, I'm not going to read this, frankly, I've done more of these slides than I thought. There is some source allocation issue. Silver Lake is bad capacity in terms of the paper. Canisius Lake is over allocated in terms of these same yield analysis. The only treatment plants and supply options that really have capacity then serve the county, our county system, the City Rochester system. So that's where we envision us getting, providing a lot of water. We can get some from Avon, we can get some from Lima, but Lima's connected to the City Rochester. But that's just adding some supplemental supply. We're talking about more than 100 or 200 gallon day. We need to have some deeper connections to City Rochester, to Monroevan, probably. The other issue in quality is, everyone's heard of the caps from Algeable. We have had several, in Canisius, Silver, but also Hemlock Lake. So it's not like, we were going to say, well, Hemlock Lake is a better source because it has less gas. It doesn't, it has not the same amount of gas. But it was limited, we didn't know about it, Hemlock versus Canisius and so on. And the quality of the source water needs is an additional treatment cost. So there's a source capacity, and then there's a treatment capacity, and then there's a source cost and a treatment cost. And as we, as you guys all look at this report, we're going to send it out probably later in the year, tomorrow. It's a fair sizable report, so it will give you a hard copy, but I don't think you guys will be able to handle it.
Do you have any thoughts about the subrises running out along with the larger staple?
You figured you couldn't handle it. So we have, then we have, as you mentioned, the redundant versus supplemental. We have international agreements that already exist. We have some other opportunities that could exist, and then we have some other limited opportunities really in itself. Because it's such a link from where we are to Barrow, Mount Morris, to down to the Anzo, to down to the Anzo. You're talking terms of all miles, but a lot of them, a lot of them are not really much. So we have them as alternatives in our report, just per the cost, but we don't really expect them to be built. If you guys decide to build them, that's obviously your choice. That's, the other thing that we saw and we looked at, this is common, this is not, this is not unique in Livingston County. We have many operators, the average age of an operator is getting a year older. We're not getting too young people involved in the water treatment business. So it's going to come a time when all of our water operators are going to be retired, and it's going to come a time, but some of them are in their mid-age. And we're concerned about the future of this industry in terms of treatment. Unless you're a state utility, City Rochester treats days only day, or the Monroevan Water Authority that has 200 million day, we have lab people, we have treatment operators on the clock. I think it's going to be hard to find qualified people in the future to run the water. And then there's some other shared service opportunities in terms of belly and operative maintenance, high-end washing, lab class, that sort of thing, that's required in every water system. That anything that you guys apply that we could combine your operators and save some money. That's one of the basic recommendations that we made, is that there's some opportunities for shared service. This is the big handout that we're going to give, which is incredibly small, even on the screen. These are all of the alternatives that we could think of in terms of evaluation in those green, and you're going to be able to see this, we had a point four that's already seated out there. The green circles there are the sources of water, so it starts with the smallest source and works right across, and the largest source is spring water, the smallest. We look at every possible alternative for clearing action or replacement or additional supply, whether it be increasing the capacity, whether it be connection to some other source. It's every single one of them considered, and we don't make recommendations, we don't make recommendations in those stuff. We have come up with what we call a score sheet, criteria, that I don't encourage all of you to fill out on your own. Basically, it's to try and rank each operator, so if you guys have to tell me, maybe it's funding decisions or support decisions. Somebody says that we're going to build this, or this, you guys have to decide whether you support it. If you look at these recommendations, you look at these alternatives, it's been a hell of a thing to have you make that decision in terms of ranking. You can say, why should you do this on this score better? And it's whatever, if I make a decision, whether it be a help decision, whether it be quantity decision, whatever the decision comes to reflect, this score sheet can help you make that decision. The original study made some definitive recommendations, you should do that, she should do that. We chose not to do that this time because frankly, we did most of everything in that original study. The other reason why we decided not to go down the avenue representing specific projects is just because one project supplies 500,000, another supplies 100,000, something from 500, 400,000, or 500,000. That becomes, that becomes an individual viewpoint. I know that Dave was involved in our discussion of that on the town and village, and all they wanted, the village wanted a voice in order to make sure that you were going to consider upgrading their treatment plant and all of the options. We have, and we are, and I think it's ultimately your guys' decision, the village's decision, our bad outs' decision in terms of making, giving the commitment of dollars on that kind of, that is, that's not, that's not our, that's not the issue.
This will ultimately lead to globalized, in commonwealth, one of the towns, village, decided that we feel like it's often just for, just to provide a little map, that assists you with grant application, or something.
So we came up with this very generic chart of what are the things that really need to be looked at. We need to look at same yield first, and that is something that doesn't even be done, frankly, we recommended that back in '91, but D.C. still hasn't done another same yield study, which is like, but Canisius and Silver Lake will need same yield studies, frankly, Hemlock does too. Then we can look at our critical infrastructure, which is everything involved from treatment to the service pipe that serves your own house. That needs to be considered in terms of what is going to fail first, and how do we plan to replace it? And then actions are either span or operate, or repair or replace, or build something new, or you protect your source. And any one of those, or any of all four of them, can be used as part of your decision-making process and yield. Again, I'm not going to read this. This is some of the scoring criteria, you're going to see this in the report. It talks about source, capacity, it talks about quality, it talks about infrastructure, longevity, high-risk infrastructure, and using that as an example, I'll talk about Mount Morris just for a second, you know, Frank. So Frank, he mentioned, he's really the driver behind this criteria, and Proctor said, how do I, how do I decide what building, what Morris is going to do? We have a $10 million replacement, a transition map, and so we're like, you don't have to do today, but it's going to probably be in the next probably 10 years, you're going to have to replace this one. How do we decide, do that or connect to some other sources? And so we came up with this criteria to help make that decision, so that we could keep evaluating, does it make sense, of cost and policies to replace that transition versus connect to the authority? And I know that there's emotional issues involved in this, there's loss of control in our system, there's objective issues to be concerned with. Those are all things that you guys need to be concerned with, and you need to address, but I could just say simply, you should just go with the most cost-effective. I know that's not always the right answer for community, and maybe there may be some good reasons why you want to stay in water, stay in the water. I know that's not always the right concern for the community, and maybe there may be some good reasons why you want to stay in the water, stay in the water business. We don't want necessarily one kind of water, or you're controlling our ability to get water, you want to. So that, that, that could be some of your, some of your decisions. And, you know, we have several other criteria, including the water rates, and how, what's the impact of that? But I think the biggest thing is the furlers, it's the panic, panics, furlers, regionalization on earth. So how many municipalities are connected? And how, and once, once you connect, then you're starting to work there. And there's some cooperation, and you're, that just shows that towns are in it to get, rather than that. That is, that's huge in terms of regional factors. We did it in Genesee County, I lived in New York, we did it in Genesee County back in two thousand, and it's been the best thing that ever happened to the county. We've been able to track forward this, if we ever did it before, certainly. And we've grown, we've grown our job base there. And that's why I perceive to do that, is to give some vision, some, some growth that would happen for you guys, and some additional jobs. Something that your kids or your grandparents, you know, give them, really, to step, and that's what we did, that's what we did in Genesee County. And I think that if we can just kind of cooperate a little better, and see everyone's perspectives, and think it was probably some reasonable, reasonable conclusion. You are all going to see this report today or tomorrow in your docs, email box. It's a fairly sizable report. The only thing that's really full-size is that it's a handout, an alternative school chart, it's really hard to see, you have to buy a lot of more on that side of the field. We'll hand that out along with executive summer, and read through the report, provide comments, please. We want to hear what you guys have to say, and if we need to read a little more, or feel stronger in some of our recommendations, if you can do that. I know that I'm advocating for that, but also I'm prepared to do it. But I try hard to keep this more effective, and just pass, and let you make the decision. And then we have the meeting on September seventeenth, and we're actually going to talk about the study, the poster.
Thanks, Rick, that's Eric. I asked the county administrator if he has any updates to say, they're a long time.
Yeah, just a brief update. The first is on the subject of COVID nineteen and current case count and the update. The map's been updated, website's been updated, I sent you an email, we have currently five active cases. Our infection rate is, is still within the region infection rate, which is under one percent, which is where you want it to be. We've maintained that stability with respect to the transmission for quite some time now, so hopefully we can keep it that way as a community and as a county. Obviously, the big kind of what-if questions are SUNY, returning, K-12 schools. Most, I believe, most of the schools, if not all of them, have some face-to-face physical component, so, you know, that'll be an issue. Rick is passing around all the stuff, so make sure you take a look at that, including the, including the map, which is pretty massive. But make sure you take a look at that, because that's got all the alternatives in it, so. And we're working on the budget, so we're about halfway through the meetings on the budget, and we'll keep you posted as we go through that process. That's all I had.
I'll ask if there's any other business before the board is sitting down. Move to a adjournment, Pringrazio? Mosin and Sackin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Gary, the meeting stands adjourned. I don't need.